Good evening. Welcome to the February 8th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ladeen.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mansell.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Kavich Williams.
Here. Thank you. Let me just read this very quickly. Font's kind of small. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extending the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Based on the current public health concerns, the board president of Evanston Township High School District 202, as head of the public body, has determined that it is neither practical nor prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education on February 8th, 2021. So here we are. So our open session, first item on this agenda is written communication. Dr. Davis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we are at items for information. The first item for information is a report on student involvement in athletes, athletics, and extracurricular activities. We have a couple of attachments that are in the agenda.
Board, good evening. You'll see on the screen, our guests, again, were just all kind of scattered around. So what I'm going to suggest, I know they've done a little bit of coordinating about this presentation. I would ask each of you, when you speak, if you'd introduce yourself and your position, and people will kind of be able to match that up with your square as we go through the presentation. And with that, I guess I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Nicole. Does that sound like a good place to start? Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Right. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We are really excited to be together for the first time, presenting the big picture about student involvement at ECHS. We're so excited to be doing this together. I am joined tonight by my esteemed colleagues, Diana Balliton, the Community Service Coordinator. I am Nicole Boyd, the Director of Student Activities. We are joined by Nick Gale, our Fine Arts Department Chair, and Chris Levitino, our Athletic Director. So we would like to be able to offer a better understanding of what student involvement looks like at ECHS, and then we're going to share some areas of growth and opportunity for our respective departments. And just a gentle reminder that the work that we do strives to reach goal two, which is our student well-being goal. And as you all have probably heard us say a zillion times before, and in every assembly or meeting, anytime we're in front of kids, we always talk about getting involved, getting involved, getting involved, whether that's student activities, fine arts, athletics, or service. We really, really focus on our student experience outside of the classroom. Some time ago, we did develop our extracurricular philosophy, and I will share that with everyone. At Evanston Township High School, our goal is to inspire a lifelong passion for learning. We provide a variety of opportunities for learning in the classroom and beyond through the arts, sports, activities, and service. Extracurricular activities are an integral part of many students' high school experience. Positive participation in activities helps to increase students' engagement in the school community. You'll hear more about that shortly. Extracurricular activities provide all students with opportunities to develop aspects of leadership, self-discipline, responsibility, teamwork, self-confidence, commitment, and student wellness while pursuing an interest that may lead to a career or a lifelong hobby. Extracurricular activities offer participants the opportunity to be leaders and role models on campus and in the community, and enable participants to represent the school district in a positive manner. So Chris is going to give us a look at exactly who we had. Oh, not yet. I'm just kidding. I'm going to share some highlights, and then Chris will tell us who was involved. So some things that we'd like to highlight across the board, for our athletics in particular, they had an all-time high of 1,582 unique students who participated in 2019, 2020. So this was approximately a 12% increase in one year. The Latino population or participation increased by 27% and about 60% over the course of three years. So we're excited about that. 92% of the varsity teams earned a team GPA of 3.5 or higher. Boys and girls, basketball ranked among the top teams in Illinois and won the CSL South and IHSA Regional Championships. Girls bowling won the CSL and the IHSA Regional Championship for the first time in ECHS history, and the CSL Hate Speech Protocol was adopted by the IHSA, which was, I have to give some shouts out to our colleague, Chris, for spearheading that effort. In the community service, they were busy all year long and raised about $22,000 through various activities. Empty Bowl is a huge fundraiser, a partnership with our Fine Arts Department in ceramics classes, through our thrift shops, our singing ball tracks, where their participants have their head shaved, tapia sales, cookbook sales, and lots of other events in which they partnered with and for local organizations. We had two students who were recognized with the Chessman Award, and one student who was awarded the United Nations Global Go Impact Award. In fine arts, they hosted Omar Thomas, who was an arranger and a composer, as an artist in residence. The Jazz Ensemble Select was selected to perform at the 2021 Illinois Music Educator Conference. Our speech and debate program is highly decorated and qualified students for national competition. They also earned $1.8 million in scholarships at the Illinois High School Art Exhibition, and the ECHS Dance Company dazzled when they performed "Illuminate." And for student activities, we also saw an all-time high of unique participants with 658 unique students involved. Some of our competitive team results, the math team placed second place in the regional competition, eighth place in the North Suburban Math League. Our chess team placed fourth in state. DECA had their season interrupted due to COVID, and were headed to nationals when we had to change plans, but about 40 of 60 students medaled that area. Mock Trial also had their season interrupted, but at local competitions, they were recognized for best attorneys and outstanding witnesses. And our Health Occupations Club, which is a newer club, qualified 28 students for state, which they are preparing for right now. So those are things that we are really excited to share about. And then here's our chess team. And now, I believe Chris will be able to tell you exactly who participated.
Thank you, Nicole. This is Chris Levitino, Athletic Director at ECHS. I'm excited to announce that overall participation numbers were really strong last year, and it's fun to actually all come together and present this information for the first time. We had 76% of all students enrolled at ECHS participated in at least one extracurricular activity or performed some hours of recorded community service. As Nicole mentioned earlier, for athletics, our 1,587 students was a record for us, and 44% of kids were involved in sports last year. Community service had 35% of the student enrollment at ECHS involved in recorded hours. Fine arts had 17%. And student activities led us all with 46% of kids at ECHS participating in clubs or activities. When we break down the numbers a little bit further and really look at each subgroup by race code, we notice that, you know, our Asian, multiracial, and white students at ECHS are all participating at over 80%, but there's some work for us to do with our Black and Latinx population. And we really need to, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, we really want to work on addressing those needs and trying to make sure those kids get an opportunity to participate in our programs before ECHS and then during ECHS when they get to us. Participation by grad year, we have a really strong group of freshmen. Last year, 80% of our freshmen were involved in one of our programs. And, you know, we held that number pretty well. I think senior year, we lose some kids, whether it's because of cut sports or them just getting involved in other interests outside of ECHS. We'd like to see that number a little bit higher, but overall, we're happy with the numbers from one grade to the next. I think this next slide really articulates an area that we have some work to do. When we break down our numbers by income status, you'll see very clearly that students from low-income families participate at 57% versus 82% of students that come from non-low-income families. And that same discrepancy also applies to students with IEP status. So we've got to try to figure out how to break down some barriers to participation, I think, even before students get to ECHS, where they feel comfortable and confident. Unfortunately, a lot of the programs that we run are expensive programs for kids to get involved with before Evanston High School. And so they don't have that same level of experience, that same confidence when they get here, and we've got to try to figure out some ways to open up those doors sooner. And then our last stat in terms of participation is a look at gender. Unfortunately, this data is presented in the binary system, which is what's required by the state of Illinois. So I don't have the non-binary numbers for us, but you'll see that females participate a little bit higher, at a higher rate than males at ECHS.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Gale, and I'm the Fine Arts Department Chair. I drew the short straw tonight, being the art guy, having to talk about all the numbers. But the first thing we're going to talk about is GPA. And one of the things that we wanted to do when we came together was to look at a few different data points with our students that are involved, just to try and paint a little bit of a more comprehensive picture of what it looks like to be involved at ECHS. And we certainly know that these aren't the only ones, but I think it was a great place to really start as a collective group. So this first one goes through GPA, and I can save you some time with the chart and just acknowledge that in every subgroup, our students that participated in at least one activity outperformed students that didn't. And if you look at the orange line at the bottom and all the way over to the right, the differential shows that the students that participate scored at almost a full grade point percentage higher than those that didn't. And that's such a significant number when we think about a four or five-point grading scale. In working with our data office, they helped us understand that this is actually a positive, moderate relationship between participating and GPA. So it's certainly something that we're proud of. It's one of the stronger data points that we're going to present. And I think, you know, for those of us that are involved, anecdotally, we do believe that being involved in activities does help students with time management, organization, as well as being engaged in their academics. So in addition to GPA, we also wanted to look at attendance. Similarly, as the last chart, you'll see in every subgroup, the students who participated in at least one activity had a higher attendance rate than those that did not. And one of the things that caught my attention was if you look at the differential between first semester and second semester, and remembering that second semester last year was when we were shelter in place, you know, we were really faced, our students were faced with an extreme challenge. And it was interesting to see that gap widen a little bit, to have a higher differential second semester. And I can only wonder how being engaged in activity might have helped our students kind of persist during that time or stay connected during that time to ECHS. But again, the same pattern emerges, where being involved showed a higher attendance rate than not being involved. And again, there's a positive, moderate relationship between these two areas. So lastly, you know, GPA attendance. And then we also wanted to think about how our students are showing up in classes and how that relates to referrals. And I think the strongest point here is to see that for students participating in at least one activity, over 85% of them didn't have any referrals for the year, and over 90%, you know, between zero or one to two referrals for the year, which is a really strong number. You know, again, I think this data kind of speaks for itself. We know that it's not a direct causation or causality between the two, but it's great to see the students that are participating in activities performing at such a high level in each of these different areas.
Hi, everybody. I'm Diana Balliton. I'm the Community Service Coordinator. I'm going to turn off my video because I think my video is lagging a little bit, but I'm going to present about the community service data. So first, we pulled community service out separately from all the other student activities to really emphasize the different nature of community service at ECHS. So it's, there are many opportunities for students to engage in service at school, to participate as student ambassadors, as ushers, supporting different offices, as team managers, doing concessions, and so on. But this also includes students who participate outside and off of our campus, doing summer service trips, tutoring at local programs, community cleanups, volunteering at soup kitchens, and so on. So again, that's just why we separated it out from the rest of the data. Of all the students enrolled last year, we had 35% of students record their community service hours. On the chart on the right, we see that about a third did less than five hours, but we see two-thirds of those students do more than five hours, ranging from five hours to over 25 hours. So we know that students are really dedicating some time to either a few different activities or a weekly activity, and having that commitment is really huge, and understanding yourself and learning more about an issue. Okay. And then similarly, we have our data broken down by the federal race code here. And overall, we see that there is a higher participation within our Asian demographic and our white demographic, but at the bottom, representation is our Black students as well as our Latinx students. So noting too that these are the number of students who record their community service data and submit it to us, although we do know that there are more students beyond this number that are doing service in their communities. All right. So in participation by grad year, we see that, again, the students who are recording their hours, for the most part, are juniors last year, the year 2021, as well as 2022, which would have been our sophomores. Typically, we see freshman year, students are kind of getting to know and navigate the system. And then between those two middle years, students are really trying to keep track of the things that they've been involved in, community service, and so on, as they're preparing to do applications for later on. And then lastly, in participation by the gender binary that Chris had mentioned earlier, we do see that female students are participating at much higher rates than our male students for perhaps various reasons. We need to really focus on how do we engage our male student population in service in the future.
So in addition to the more structured ways, structured, I mean, like rostered attendance with fine arts, community service, student activities, and athletics, there are a variety of other ways that students are engaged or can be involved or have impacted school. One of the first things that comes to mind is our social consciousness series. As you all know, today, we have the Virtual Black Student Summit, where we had several hundred students in participation. So those are the things that happen throughout the year for a variety of different populations, where there's a lot of student engagement. Students show up at sporting events as fans. They show up as audiences. They attend one of the three pep rallies that we have throughout the year. They do field trips for classrooms or for classes or for extracurriculars. Students participate in the Fourth of July Parade or in a variety of other ways that we don't necessarily capture through one of our rostered activities. If you come to ECHS on any Friday morning, you will be greeted by students at the front door with "Happy Friday." One of our wonderful music groups would be in the lobby playing in front of the fireplaces. So there's a whole, there's quite a few different touchpoints that we also just wanted to highlight, in addition to our buckets, as we've been calling them. So we just have a reach that extends beyond the things that we take attendance for.
And to Ms. Boyd's point, we don't, we haven't been able to capture that yet, but we will. So.
So as proud as we are about all the different numbers that we shared with you, we do recognize there's some areas for growth that we really want to take a look at going forward. I think number one on the list that we identified across the board for all of our groups is we really need to increase participation for students who identify as Latinx. There are certain barriers that exist. We want to try to figure out what those are. We want to try to decrease them or remove them altogether so that we can have a lot more students involved in our activities. And the same thing goes for all students of color in traditionally white-dominated extracurricular activities. Again, I think one of the things that we've recognized is that the more exposure students can have to the different activities that we do prior to coming to ECHS, the more confidence, the more familiar, the more comfortable they're going to be signing up for those programs when they get here. So we have to try to figure out how to expose them to some of those opportunities earlier. And finally, one of the things that we recognize this year that we really can take advantage of is our freshman advisory study hall is really a great resource for connecting with our freshmen. And we got an interest inventory from them this year that was really, really helpful for us to share with our sponsors and our coaches and advisors to try to follow up with those freshmen, to keep them or to get them involved in activities this year. So those are three things that we know we can take advantage of in the future.
With that, we would like to open it up to any questions you all may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Lots of really good and exciting information, and I appreciate those areas of growth and just some thoughts about how to increase participation, particularly participation from our Latinx students and African-American students. So we'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Gretchen?
Hi. Thanks so much, everybody. Big compliments. I like this consolidated reporting system. I think it's great to have all of these things collected in one place. So that was, that's a nice, terrific new change. The one thing I would like to see, this probably isn't a good year for it, frankly, is the trend over time. So we've, we captured a year, with this pandemic, everything's up for grabs. So I just note that for somewhere when life returns to normal. And then two other quick things. I'd like that you acknowledge the opportunities to improve participation, and I'll be interested to hear more about the strategies you're using to expand that participation down the road, because it sounds like you're acknowledging the need, but I'm less clear on how you're going to change it. But the FASH, analyzing the FASH data seems very logical and hopefully should yield more student interest and participation. And then lastly, I just want to say, is Nick Gale here somewhere? It seems like the fine art number is, I don't know, just low. Is there something that's not included there? I don't know. I was, you know, I was on stage crew and I was in band, so I just trying to rep my youth and wondering, I mean, is that if I, if there were a trend, you know, if we had a comparison to other years, I would have some sense of whether this is just the way it always is, or for some reason, I don't have the presentation or the number in front of me. It was like 17% of students in fine arts?
Yeah, it was 17% of the students enrolled at ECHS in fine arts. And I would say that the number is pretty typical. We're usually around 600 in terms of our extracurricular activities. One of the things we did include in this report is students that are in co-curricular groups, like our band, orchestra, and choir students, just knowing that those courses and experiences do have this extracurricular component to them. You know, we could certainly talk about why the fine arts group of students tends to be a little smaller than the rest of the areas, you know, and I'm happy to go into that at some point. I think it certainly has to do with not only things, constraints, like facilities and things like that. I think prior experiences are a really big factor in that. When we think about, you know, experiences that are offered within the school day at District 65 as compared to experiences that are offered outside of the school day through childcare centers, their right-at-school or right-after-school program, as well as community programs as well. You know, as Chris continuously mentioned, our goal is not just to break down barriers within our walls, but try to give more students experiences before they get here.
Yeah, and I think that's everything, really. You know, there's only so much we can do if somebody arrives at the high school and they've, you know, never done sports or whatever, or picked up a trombone, for example. Anyway, yeah, kudos to all of you because these are crazy times. So appreciate the, appreciate the information.
What I'll offer a couple?
Oh, go ahead.
June, you keep jumping on top.
You guys are really together.
You go this time. Go.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to commend you all for the work that you do, because it speaks to serving the whole student. And we know how important that is. It's so important when they're in the school space. And how much more is it now that we're going through this pandemic? So thank you so much for what you do. And thank you for your transparency over time as you've come here. And many of you have echoed the same what Chris has said, the concern about those, the level of participation of the Latinx in the Black community, and, you know, trying to figure out why that is, the why. And I think at this point, we do know that there is a correlation between academic achievement and being engaged in the school community. And there's a correlation that happens in, as it relates to discipline and being engaged in the, in the school community. And my question, and just putting it out there, like, we know there are so many different factors that go into and that impact a student's readiness to successfully be involved when they get to high school. So some of them are affordability. They've been mentioned, affordability, academics, the socialization that happens. That's another factor that is probably not mentioned as much, especially when you're in a small town. It's like, if you're part of a group, that group, it's like a cohort that starts very early on. And for those who aren't a part of that cohort, you're kind of like on the outside looking in. So, and also the challenge is being such a small And also the challenges being such a small town, the opportunities that exist in providing opportunities. So that we can meet, you know, as many of our children as we can where they are, so they, they can express. All of themselves. So my question is. Since we know some of those factors that are involved in ensuring that students are prepared to. To, to engage, to be engaged when they get to high school. I'm just wondering how much work has there been done outside of the district with District sixty five with other. I was gonna say service providers, but others who provide experiences outside of the classroom. And have all of those components come together collectively. So at the same table, you have people who are the gatekeepers for the costs. At the same table, you have those that are, that are involved in the academic portion, the academic achievement. At the same table, you have those who are. Coaches, instructors and other fine arts people involved in the arts. Are they all sitting at the same table? And, and, and developing common goals which would be to ultimately. Increase the level of participation in these underrepresented groups, just like you would have common reading goals and. And so forth. That's, that would be my question. But again, I want to really thank you all for all of the tremendous work that you do. To try, because I know you're trying, but maybe we need to try a little differently or, or expand our reach. And work more collectively together.
I appreciate that question. I, I, I think. If you guys saw the numbers earlier, and it's actually a slight typo earlier that I made in the presentation where we identify that our. Latino participation has increased by sixty percent over the last three years in athletics. It's actually our Latina participation, our female participation. And I think one of the reasons why that's grown so much is because of programs like Girls Play Sports and our partnership with G P S. Where we've introduced all these myriad of opportunities for sports to girls as early as third, fourth and fifth grade. And reinforce that sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And now when they get to E T H S, there's a much greater comfort level and. You know, those numbers just don't happen by themselves. There's nothing magical that I did. It's, it's that these girls feel more comfortable about coming out for sports. And I think that's sort of where the light bulb went off for me is that we need to do the same thing for our Latinos. To, to make our boys feel like this is a, 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 a place for them to be as well. And so. So kudos to Girls Play Sports for, for organizing those opportunities. And now we've got to try to figure out ways to partner with other groups. To try to expose our students of color, especially. Our black males and, and our Latinos to those opportunities before they get to E T H S.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all. I am always so impressed by everything that we offer at E T H S. So. I mean, that alone just takes my breath away. You all do a good job trying to get students to see that and to. To understand that and to try to get them involved. So I definitely appreciate that. Just two questions. I think in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, I could be wrong. We've broken down the, the GPA by male and female across racial subgroups. So we were able in the past to see how our black males were performing by GPA. Usually they, you know. So I didn't see that this time around. And I'm always interested in knowing. How our black males perform because we're very concerned about, you know, making sure we. We, we are, you know, very much aware of what our black males need. And then the second question, Chris. Remember a few years ago, we had a discussion about changing the requirements for, I think it was a study table or. GPA or something like that. Is it working? Has it worked? I mean, are kids involved? Because you know, I, I laid in heavy on that. And I, and I just want to know, like, where are we with that? And, you know, is it working the way that you had hoped?
Nicole, you can speak to this question too, okay?
Okay, so you all are ready for me.
So your, your first question about breaking the, the data down by gender, I think. This is the first year that we've all presented together. So in previous years, that was the report that I, I gave. And I think just the magnitude of the data of four different groups, we, we, we tried to, to. Probably provide the, the, the most simplistic version this first year. But it's certainly something that we can dig a little deeper on and disaggregate that by gender for you guys next year. I don't think that'll be too complex for us to do. So you can see that. So apologize that we didn't have that for this year. And as far as your, your number, I, I would say from, from athletic department standpoint. We, I presented on this last year and I didn't know if, you know, it was going to be a non, an anomaly or not, but. Our GPA numbers continue to be actually point two GPA higher for student athletes than they were previously. Before we changed the rules. So as shocked as I was last year that our number didn't, you know, I was hoping it would just at least maintain where it was. It actually increased and it's maintained that, that, that increase. So I think it is working well, but more importantly. Isn't just like, what's our average GPA number? It's what, how has this impacted the students that have been left behind in the past? And, you know, it, it, it's. It's so incredible that we're able to connect with a dozen to two dozen kids. That are now involved in something that have positive influences from coaches or sponsors. To just teammates and, and colleagues and friends that are involved in these programs. To stay with them throughout that entire year and keep them kind of focused on, on doing the right things. And so we've seen the students that would otherwise have been ineligible do better in school. The semesters, especially when they're involved in one of our programs. And, you know, I can only speak to athletics in that sense. But we did, we did run that data and, you know, it's around eighty to eighty-five percent typically. Of kids that would have been ineligible that now after the end of that semester that they're with us on our academic watch list. Because we still are holding them accountable to that. We're just keeping our arms around them in a hug instead of pushing them away. From, from not being able to participate. And so those kids, about eighty-five percent of them earn above a two point O at the end of that semester.
For student activities. Maybe not so surprisingly, we weren't really impacted by this at all. The criteria for us was students who perform, compete or represent. So a lot of our competitive clubs are more academic, like our scholastic ball or mock trial or things like that. So students who participate in those things just happen to be doing better in the classroom anyway. So what we, what we noticed, really, we were seeing the. Their grades impacted for seniors who were taking classes at Northwestern and didn't have five, weren't enrolled in five classes at E T H S. So we. Would be communicating with professors just saying, oh, let us know if this kid is in passing because they're taking. Part of their enrollment is at the university. So really, that was what it boiled down to for us. So. That we didn't find that we were excluding students who would otherwise be participating.
Thank you.
Monique, I'm glad you asked that question and Chris, and I really appreciate it and I'm happy about your answer. Because I remember when we had that discussion and my vote for it was exactly what you said, that it was a way to keep the kids engaged. And to not penalize them for a whole season, but help them through and use the, their interest in staying engaged in that. Order activity to support them academically. And I'm, I'm really glad that that's, that's what's happening. So that's, thank you both. Asking the question and answering it that way. And I was wondering to what extent, and I know with sports. You know, we all, we've all seen this, you know, if your kid didn't start at four playing whatever sport. By ninth grade, you're like, oh, I couldn't do that. You know, the kids I know play that sport have been playing for eight years or whatever. So I know that it's hard because we have to get them engaged in sports at a younger age and their speeds and all that. But I wonder with some of the activities, Nicole, what extent are we reaching back? Because I think some of our best salespeople are our kids, right? And from, you know, people who are engaged in activities that fifth graders have never heard of, you know. How could, are we kind of sending our high school kids back to their elementary and middle schools? To sort of share some of those experiences and get them excited at a younger age. I, I don't, I mean, I know that. Again, you still have to give them opportunities when they're younger, but maybe not so much with debate and mock trial where. Most kids just get involved in those things when they hit E T H S. So. That's my question is, to what extent can we or are we using our student. Students who are engaged in these activities to sort of help energize and, and help younger students understand. What this is and how they might be interested in it down the road.
I think it varies across program. I, for sure, I know that our chess team has done that. They have. Played with younger students, middle school students, elementary students. They've held workshops. They did. A camp over the summer, a virtual camp. So our chess team really has been really intentional about that and very active in that. That's the first thing that comes to my mind. Some of the other things are escaping me, but not consistently across the board. That's something we probably definitely could. Look to, look to do and see, but I'm certain that our chess team has.
Yeah, oh, and I, I guess it's just, we are very lucky in this community. Kids. At the elementary school level just can't wait till they get to E T H S. They're so excited to go to a basketball game when they're in fifth grade. You know, an E T H S game or whatever. And I just feel like it's such a great opportunity. And some kids do get to go to E T H S for sports camps and things, but those have fees. And so, I don't know, I just. The more we can get kids at younger ages engaged with the school and seeing how great it is and getting. The big kids come and talk to them. I think it's, it's a big deal for those younger students. I think so. Anyway, I know you're doing so much and you guys are doing a great job, but we've got great assets in our students and, and they're. I, I think younger kids really look up to the high school in a lot of ways. So. Yeah, so thanks. I appreciate all of your great work.
Yeah, Pat, you, you actually bring up a good point of something that we might be able to help Nicole out with, with the athletic department is. We do draw pretty good crowds for basketball and football games and maybe, you know, we, we typically tend to focus on highlights. Of other sports programs, but we have such great fine arts programs and, and clubs and activities that we could. Try to highlight some of those big accomplishments throughout the year at quarter breaks and so forth as well. Just for those little kids that are sitting out there and don't realize, oh my God, there's a mock trial team and hey, mom, what's that? And so I think there's opportunities to. To increase the exposure for non-sports programs at our sports event.
That's great, Chris. Thanks.
I agree. Those are some excellent strategies and, and also another way to connect with District sixty five. So I think that would be great. Right, other questions? Other board questions?
Have a quick question.
Sure.
First, I did want to thank you for the presentation. You guys are doing such a great job engaging the students in these activities. It's so impressive. So thank you for that. I don't, I think, I don't think that the data point was shown unless I missed it, but did you also see. With your I E P students, a similar increase in GPA as you saw with non-I E P students? With those participating?
I'm gonna look back on our data.
I'm sorry, would you mind asking that question again? I was. Asking me something here in my.
I was just asking, if you saw a similar increase in GPA with your I E P students than with your non-I E P students.
So I can, I just took a look at it. I can say that there, the differential was still positive. So students that participated did have a higher GPA than those that did not. The, the amount of differential was more minimal than some of the other subgroups.
Okay, thank you.
Can I put Nick and Nicole on the spot just for a little bit here? I'm going to anyway. You, you know, we're, we're, we're going to be starting a lot of in-person experiences. Some have already been, been rolled out and, and we're fully rolling it out next week, the sixteenth. And we already, I think people have a pretty good understanding about what athletic experiences are, the, the kind of things that we're used to and, and we've all grown up with. But Nick and Nicole, could you give some, just examples of the kind of in-person experiences? That our students are going to be able to take advantage of?
Ladies first. So for student activities and community service. So we're working together. So there'll be kind of fun activities and service activities. On every Monday, anything from card making to, to yoga. To being able to, there's a lot of arts and crafts options. There's an option to come learn double Dutch. There's an option to just come and talk and chat about hot topics. So there's a, a wide variety of activities. And service, oh, tie dyeing is one of the things that Community Services is doing. But there's.
And you all talked to the kids, Nicole, right? These ideas came from the kids.
Yes, from student ambassadors. There's about a hundred and fifty student ambassadors and student council. So there. We just wanted to make sure we were meeting their, their needs and desires and ask what kind of things would, you know, would. Would you, what would get you to come into the building? What would you like to do? What would you come in for? So we just really wanted to make sure we were meeting their needs and so far, so good.
Thank you. And on our end in fine arts, we're in the process right now of continuing to survey our students. I know we reached out to our music students. We've had a really successful response so far on students that feel comfortable coming into the building. Our staff did a great job of communicating to the parents what protocols we'd be taking specific to music. You know, so once we have a better understanding of how many kids and which kids are interested in coming in, then we're going to form opportunities around that group. You know, it would be tough to say we're going to do jazz and then find out that none of our saxophone players are going to be able to come in. So. This will just allow us to kind of create the best experience for them once we know who they're going to be. And then with theater in specific, I know our Yama board met last week. As Carmia knows, and, and we're trying to figure out different options that we can do there. I thought in the fall, our theater department put together a couple different recorded performances and. A huge shout out to the I T crew like William Jenkins for helping, but they were incredibly successful. And I think it would be a big success if we could even replicate something similar. You know, where we were able to record things and put that, put those out there. So we're in the process now of trying to identify shows that would be good for that. And then we'll go down the line of doing auditions, communicating out to students and figuring out how to make it work logistically.
I, I just want to thank both of you and, and, and kudos to everybody who understands. That this is, this is being responsive to students. And so you're reaching out to students and you're listening to students. And, and, and you're, you're so flexible and open to the kind of things that they want to be able to come into their school. Participate in. So to both of you, thank you for, because that really was asking you off the cuff. And, and you both did a great job.
Learned my lesson a couple of years ago when basketball was at Chicago State and I ordered several hundred orange t-shirts. And the kids wanted to wear all white and they didn't tell me. So now I make sure I, I use student voice and everything. So I don't. So now I make sure I, I use student voice and everything, so I don't.
Great story. We live and learn, don't we?
They, they wore them, Mary. They wore them though. Later.
I actually wanted to ask both Nick and Nicole, um, and even Chris, um, you know, I know like, you know, you have to play the sax in order to be in the jazz group. So clearly those are some students who already have experience. But are there opportunities within fine arts or some of the activities or even within sports where I may not know much about, I don't know, ultimate frisbee, but I want to go learn that and, and play or hacky sack or something, or to do like improv with, you know, more as a fun thing, not a, a show, even though I think it's great that you're doing shows and having auditions and all that, that's terrific. I'm just wondering if there are like, get your toe in it kind of fun things that kids could get involved in, even if it's not their normal, you know, sport or their, you know, something they've done many times before.
And, and Pat, can I clarify? Do you mean now or over the next couple of months? Or are you talking about in a typical school year?
No, I mean now, in the, in the activities that you're planning, yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the things we've been talking about is how do we at least introduce our programs to students? Even if they're not comfortable coming in or even if their schedule doesn't allow for them to be involved. So we're even thinking about something as simple as like a tour, you know, come see our theater facilities, um, particularly for some of our freshmen, um, come see the music spaces. If, if, you know, for some of these students, they've also been participating online with these staff members, uh, but they've never seen them in person. They've never seen the band room in person. Um, you know, so we're talking about how to just kind of introduce them to the space without any commitment.
And similarly, the activities that we all have planned are separate and apart from our extra curriculum, clubs and activities that have been meeting virtually that can meet in person. So the idea is how to get students, um, involved who may not otherwise be involved. So everything that we are offering, it's, it's for any, any student who wants to, to show up and participate. So no previous experience, just come and, and to be quite honest, some kids, the feedback, they just want to see each other. So if we end up not doing anything structured and they just want to be in a space and just talk, there's space for that too. So, um, we're just looking, looking forward to it. And, um, you know, we have built out a schedule from now until May, but happy to include things, happy to, um, add things, switch things, pivot. Uh, we just wanted to like, like Dr. Woodspun said, be responsive to what, what it is that they want to do.
Great. Of course, uh, we, we've actually been given a great gift by the I T S A this year, uh, with, uh, contact days, which were not, uh, ever afforded before, which essentially allows us to run practices outside of the season. And so especially for certain sports, club sports, um, like fencing and field hockey. Uh, you mentioned ultimate frisbee, um, table tennis. Those are going to be opportunities where kids can, can, they have to still register because we have a certain restrictions on that. But, uh, with doctors, physicals and so forth, but, but those are, those are great sports, uh, for kids that have never done them before, because most kids involved in those sports have never played those before, to get involved and participate. And I think we saw a little bit of that in the fall, even outside of those club sports with, with our contact days. So that's been nice this year.
As a club sponsor, I would say we've just seen all of our participation like balloon. So for the community service club, we have, uh, over three hundred members who are part of our Google classroom this year. For our program, we had two hundred students apply to be a part of the program and we didn't want to deny any of them. Um, so found different ways for them to participate and students are just, you know, excited to see each other and, and meeting people, even if it's in an online space.
Nice.
Thank you all. That's terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, this is really exciting. This is really good. This is always an, a, a, a really informative, exciting report. I really do, I also like the collective reporting. Um, it's very thorough, so. Thank you, and I think that everybody who wanted to ask a question were able to do that. I think we're ready to move on. So thank you again for your time.
And to all of our guests, no, you don't have to stay and, and be here on screen, but you can certainly stay tuned.
Eric, they're staying. They, they know they have to stay, so.
Oh, good. All right. Okay. Uh, yeah, you, you and, you and Peter doing this next, uh, uh, presentation. I can see now you recruited, uh, assistants in that, so good for you. Okay. All right. I'll introduce the next item.
Thank you.
Uh, we, uh, we have a standing item at every board meeting, uh, with an update on our e-learning. And we certainly have that again for you this evening. And, uh, one of the features tonight is to, uh, really explain in a lot more depth, uh, the, uh, planning we have in place for the in-person experiences. And so, uh, uh, I don't know, Marcus, Pete, which one of you is going to go first?
Uh, why don't, why don't we go first? It'll be a nice seamless transition for what we were just talking about to, uh, the in-person experiences. And so I'm going to ask Nicole Boyd to, um, share a little bit about the, the vision for the in-person experiences and to talk a little bit about some of the how kids are going to sign up, what the Google site's going to look like, et cetera, et cetera. And then I'll come, um, and talk about our Safe Center for Online Learning. So Nicole?
Sorry, I was muted. Okay, so as you all know, on the week of February fifteenth, we will begin our in-person experiences. And we have been working really hard, um, um, across department to, um, provide these really meaningful opportunities for students with a focus on well-being, connectedness and belonging. Um, we know, um, um, that our students just miss each other. Um, they miss the building, they miss the staff, and, um, we are really working to be responsive and meet their needs. Um, this is what the Google, um, site looks like. This was designed by our colleague, Ally Hart. Um, it looks absolutely amazing and everybody who has seen it so far, um, adores it, um, nicely branded. Um, so tomorrow there will be, um, no, Wednesday. Wednesday is when this, um, site goes live. So this is a Google site which, um, is student facing only. So students will be able to click any of these links and then sign up, um, for different opportunities. Um, Monday fun days, um, this is patterned by behind what's community service and student activities, uh, we're doing in the fall with outdoor experiences on Monday. So some of the things that I just shared. Um, the clubs and activities are the ways to get involved after school. All of our clubs and activities, um, that have been meeting virtually are always open to new students at any time. Um, there's a link to the athletic opportunities, um, that Chris just spoke about. Um, fine arts activities will be here. Uh, then of course, specific opportunities are when, um, the things that different classroom teachers may choose to offer. They will be offering non-graded experiences. Um, so it could be a lab, it could be, um, a, a hands-on experience or a lab, um, that follows social distancing guidelines. But it could be, um, a variety of things that I know that our teachers are really looking forward to being able to do some creative stuff in the classroom. So that's what those are. Um, uh, here's another area that we were being really responsive at. Ms. Hart, um, and Ms. Curtis will be doing, um, um, the current freshman will be able to walk their schedules. And we, um, really quickly, um, saw a need for transfer students. Um, some families had reached out because their students had transferred here and had never set foot inside of E T H S. So, uh, these students will be able to walk one-on-one with an ambassador around the building and walk their schedule and, um, be able to familiarize themselves with the inside of the school. Um, Dr. Campbell is going to share a little bit more about the Safe Center for Online Learning. Um, Dr. Kiwanah Brown and Scott Bramley have been really working hard on that one. And then, um, I understand that, uh, we will be working with Y O U and, um, um.
Rebel Human.
Thank you. I forget that all the time. I'm sorry. Um, Rebel Human, um, who will be, um, coming in to do some act, some after-school activities and some mindfulness, um, um, activities with our students. They have been doing it through, um, a virtual classroom. So this is what, um, will go live on Wednesday for students to be able to sign up and register for the different activities that they want to participate in. Was there, um, so what else can I think? So, um, the, the rest of the information I would have to share would be more of the behind-the-scenes things, how teachers sign up, how students sign up. Um, but this is what is student facing, um, about all of the different opportunities that they will be able to have. So I'll be able to answer any other more specific questions, um, if there are. But Dr. Campbell, I know you wanted to speak about the Safe Center for Online Learning.
Yes, and one of the things that we wanted to do, uh, in this process is to make sure that this was easy for students, uh, to do, um, but also safe for students and staff. You can, I share your, your screen, Nicole, because I got some slides. Um, we wanted to make sure that it was easy for students to do, easy for staff, uh, to sign up and to, uh, to let us know what they were doing. It helps us manage the process of the number of kids and be able to, to, to determine which rooms and be able to keep track of, of students and be able to contact trace, uh, if necessary. Um, and so we're abiding by all of the C D C and I D P H guidelines, uh, which is really important. All of the social distancing, mask wearing, all of that stuff will be, uh, very much a part of these in-person, uh, experiences. And, um, we're doing this because we're keeping the, the mental health of our, of our students, uh, in mind, uh, because we know that they, they just want to connect. I'm going to share a, a concept that we're also engaging in this process called the Safe Center for Online Learning. And, uh, the purpose of our Safe Center for Online Learning is designed to be a supervised space for kids who can participate in enhanced e-learning from school, um, in case that there is a, a situation at home that, uh, or wherever they are, that they just would like to be, um, um, with us at sixteen hundred Dodge. And so, um, this is something that it is going to, uh, ma, be sure that, we'll be sure that kids are, um, are, are, are supported. Uh, we'll also be sure that, um, kids who are, um, just wanting to find a place to be during the day can, and can come to school to do that. Um, I would also like to share that, there we go. Um, the office hours are, um, from eight to three. Um, and, um, you know, we'll be listing these so that students can know where they are supposed to be and when that they're supposed to be there. Uh, and, uh, this is pretty much the, to, in general, like what we would, are looking for. You know, there are a lot of people who have, uh, been working on this, Dr. Kiwanah Brown and soon to be Dr. Scott Bramley, uh, in this, uh, process. Um, and this is, this places for the, having kids to have reliable internet, uh, to, um, have, um, uh, just a place, as I said, just a place to be. Um, you know, we've got our east cafeteria that will be our, our location and, uh, we're asking students to register for this, uh, because we want to be able to anticipate if a special education student comes in, what sort of related services that we would need to provide for that. Uh, what sort of, uh, you know, uh, you know, setup, what social distancing and things like that. So this won't be a drop-in, right? Students will need to register, uh, because what do we do if we have a hundred kids that just decided to show up one day? That's certainly not safe. We want to be able to anticipate who's coming, um, so we can plan for, for safety procedures and protocols. Uh, there'll be a referral process if, if necessary, uh, where teachers may want to refer a student to say, hey, look, if, if you want to come in, uh, to E T H S, why don't you sign up for this? Our callers that are reaching out to kids and families every single day about attendance, they will also be mentioning our Safe Center for Online Learning. We will be providing food, but we will be providing food through the, uh, I S B I D P H guidelines. It won't be anything hot, um, but we will be making sure that the kids who are there will also have something to eat. And, um, we, we want to, as, as we've been talking about this particular, uh, concept, I want to be, make sure that, you know, you know, as we, we talk about equity, uh, that, you know, the conversation has typically gone, well, we want to make sure that our black and brown kids can sign up for this. Um, we will not be requiring any kid to come to this, uh, Safe Center for Online Learning. Uh, there are lots of reasons why many black and brown families would not want to put their, uh, put their families, uh, at risk at home. And so, um, this is a, a personal decision, uh, by the kid and the family to be able to do this. But we will not be saying to families, your kid, your student must come to this. Uh, because, um, for very personal family reasons, we wouldn't want, not want to assume that, um, that would be the case. But for any student that, um, you know, who would want to register, uh, you know, so they certainly have the ability to register and, uh, we will be serving them and, and meeting their needs in that regard. So we are, um, pleased to be able to offer this. Um, we are pleased to be able to, uh, do it now with the metrics being what they are. Um, this allows for us to continue with the continuity of instruction. Uh, and, um, these in-person experiences have the mental health of our kids in mind, uh, while we're maintaining the continuity of instruction for this particular point, uh, in time. So that's a little bit about, uh, well, maybe a lot about some of our in-person experiences and thinking, uh, behind this. Uh, we've asked, I've asked Chris and Nicole and Nick to stay because they've been the thinkers that have been helping us to drive a lot of this, uh, just given the work that they've just presented on that really informs and, and, and sort of leads our, our efforts here. Um, but this is, um, a, we will be providing a robust opportunity of experiences for kids. And then the communication that has gone out, we were, were very clear that any student that wants to participate in an in-person experience will be able to do so. That is our goal. Uh, that is what we've been planning for and, and we plan to meet that, uh, uh, those expectations of ourselves and of those who would want to participate. So, um, that's what we have for now and I guess, um, you know, Madam President, if you want to open up for questions, this is certainly for us. It's time for us to do that.
Did you want Pete, did you want Pete to go ahead and, and finish up first?
Oh, yeah. Well, we can do that part and then do it all together. That's.
Discussion, yeah.
Okay.
So it's all the e-learning presentation.
For sure.
I get the very exciting, uh, you know, sort of come, come at the end here and talk about grades. I actually have some grade distribution data, uh, from first semester, so. Uh, but just as I transition, I just want to say that, you know, what we're working on here with our in-person experiences is about connecting students, seeing people, students interacting with each other and staff safely, socially distanced, but doing so. But it's also about getting out of the house and time away from screens. So, so that's, that's, that's really central to this. Uh, but I'm going to transition now. The good news, uh, is I'm going to share my screen. Uh, and you will see, um, hopefully, my presentation. Let's see here. If I go there and then I go here, and I go here, and I go present. Is that working? Perfect. All right. So this is a continuation. Last time we talked about attendance. I just wanted to flash the attendance, uh, rate up there. That was from, uh, Ty's presentation last time. So it was ninety-six point eight, uh, percent was our overall estimated, uh, average daily attendance. But we also looked at our semester grades. This is something we don't normally report on, but we did run this report because we wanted to know, how did our students do? Uh, we were very aware that nationally there is a, uh, very large failure rate, uh, was associated with, uh, the first semester of the, uh, pandemic of, of this school year, uh, in the, in the COVID, uh, experiences kids are having. Uh, so here, without further ado, here are our distributions. I'm going to do this a couple of different ways. One of the ways I'm going to do it is just give you the chart to look at for a second. Uh, you'll see here that we have, uh, our current school year and last school year. This is semester one grades. Uh, there were twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three grades, uh, first semester. Uh, last year there were two thousand, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine grades, so roughly comparable. Uh, you'll see that fifty-eight percent of the. You'll see that fifty-eight percent of the students, fifty-eight percent of the grades were A's. Forty-seven percent last year were A's. Nineteen percent were B's compared to twenty-seven percent. So you see a shift in A's and B's from B's going to A's this year. That's where that movement is. You'll see our Cs were at ten percent compared to thirteen percent in twenty nineteen twenty. We had seven percent D's compared to five percent D's. So there was a shift here as well. Probably in this direction. And then if you look at our C Fs, that's our COVID Fs. We had eight hundred and seventy-three COVID Fs, and that was three percent of all grades. And last year we had seven hundred and fifty-one Fs. That would be the comparable grade, which is a three percent. Again, it's three percent F, so that was relatively static. You'll see our incompletes. We only had seven, our incompletes went down, and that's interesting, and we probably need to look at that. We went from a hundred and thirty-five incompletes last school year for a semester to seventy-five. That's about half. I'm curious to know what's going on there. I would have anticipated during, during a semester where folks were being, where COVID was a factor that maybe, and mental health was a factor, that maybe we would have seen more than seventy-five, but we did not. So I just am curious as to what that is really about. N Cs, that's our attendance policy piece that we have when we're in person. We did not issue N Cs last semester, so you see that's a zero compared to eighty-seven, and most of those N Cs go through a process and are eventually waived and then they become a grade. And then you see that we had five hundred and seventy-three grades of P for pass. And last year we had nine hundred and fifteen grades of P for pass. So there was more use of the pass, the P for pass code last semester. Now here's what I really want to highlight for everybody, though. I mean, that's all well and good, but what I did, and I looked at these numbers and I said, how does this really, what does this really look like? Where's the movement? Where's the consistency? And these grades are consistent within bands. If you look at the combined total of A's and B's, the percentages, we had seventy-seven percent A's and B's last semester. In nineteen twenty, we had seventy-four percent. That's only a three, that's a three percent increase in A's and B's. For Cs and D's, we had seventeen percent Cs and D's. In previous year, we had eighteen percent. And our C Fs, which are our COVID Fs, plus our right Fs, I just combined those for this chart. You'll see that those are, those are three percent and three percent. So the question, so it's really interesting that these grades are extraordinarily consistent. Now, what does it mean to have consistent grades? I think it means a couple of things. One is that it's consistent, which is actually reassuring. We didn't see an overabundance of A's or an overabundance of Fs. We know that was a challenge. We also were able to give grades across the whole spectrum, A, B, C, D. And we call it COVID F. The difference between an F and a COVID F is that a COVID F is on your transcript as an F. It's a COVID F. But it doesn't negatively impact your GPA. In fact, you can take that course, make up that course and you'll get a grade. So, so in a traditional year, an F would calculate as a zero on the GPA. But under COVID F, it just doesn't calculate. So we figured you don't get credit for the class. And that was good enough for us at these times. Just to put this into some context, there are some schools that aren't able to go through the full A, B, C, D, F grading scale currently. There are some schools that are not doing that. They're doing different things. We felt it was very important to have consistency in grading, consistency in expectations for our students in a very inconsistent year for them personally and emotionally. So again, what did we see? We saw a very, very consistent grade distribution. And with that, I am going to exit out, stop sharing my screen. And now I guess we're all open for questions.
All right. Thank you, all of you, for that additional information as we get ready for this big shift in offering in-person experiences and really looking at how kids are doing academically or how they've done so far this year. It's really helpful. Pete, comparing the grades from the previous year percentage-wise with the grades this year.
Yeah, let me just add that that includes every grade that was earned first, first semester. Sometimes if students were to drop at the end of the semester, we would remove those grades. Right? But we kept all those grades in for reporting purposes. So you see everything. That's every student, every grade for every student.
Thank you. All right. Board. Questions? Comments? Gretchen?
Just a couple of quick questions. Pete, is, if we were to look at those grade comparisons going back another, I don't know, two to four years previous, how would that look? Do you know?
It would look relatively the same. The, the grades, once upon a time at E T H S, there were thirty-six different ways to calculate an A, a B, a C, a D, or an F.
I remember some of that.
I led a group and we made a recommendation. We went to one grading scale. I was told that it would redistribute all of the A's, B's, C's, and Fs, but they settled into a consistent pattern. It's very consistent. It's consistent. I mean, consistency is okay, but you, it makes changing that pattern very difficult. So it was very interesting that even first semester with remote learning, we find the same, not exactly the same. There were a few more A's, right? But the overall distribution was the same.
Yeah, it's, I remember when the grade scale changes happened and there used to be just these wild discrepancies and, and it was all around like A minuses and B pluses and cutoffs at like ninety-two point five percent or whatever. It was crazy. And, and just different between teachers and classes and, yeah. Okay, that was, that was, you know, just an easy one. Then on our, on our new newly beginning in-person activities, I don't know who to direct this to, Nicole, or it may be more than one person. Who are, who are the adults on board with this? So we're not going back to classroom experiences. Are teachers involved in the in-person experiences? Or are these staff people that are different than teachers? Or is it a mix of both? And if we're concerned about safety of our staff and our teachers as we are, how, how, how is it that we're going forward with this? Could you just speak to how we're reconciling the idea that we're not going to more in-person classroom learning as opposed to the classroom experiences that you've described?
I'll speak to that.
Kind of run through, and I don't know who the best person is.
I'm going to speak to that last question because this is really a district question. Yeah, this, this is a different structure than if we were to go to a school day of classes. And we really believe that this structure is going to offer students lots of in-person activities, lots of opportunities to come into their school. But it will not create the same safety issues that trying to conduct classes would do. And let me just go back to our original hybrid plan, which we worked on last summer and fall. And if we were trying to do something like that, that plan is to bring in up to twenty-five percent of our students each, each day. So roughly nine hundred to a thousand students. At the same time, we would have, because, you know, you're offering all your classes, you're offering everything. We'd have to have all the adults in the building. I mean, you can't, you know, offer all the classes and then the adults not be here. And that's another six hundred people. So if we were to do that, that would be around fifteen hundred people would need to be here. And then because people would be coming in on alternating days and alternating weeks, we would be cycling through literally four thousand students with six hundred adults coming in every day on those days. And then because it's a class schedule, because that's how schools work, about every hour you would be having passing periods. So the thousand students in the building, every hour, you know, would get up and move around. And, and, and they go into other classrooms with different configurations of people. What this in-person does, it actually creates, and you saw that registration plan. It creates specific in-person experiences where students sign up and they come in and they go directly to that experience. And, and, and so we've established pods. And when they're done with that pod, they exit the building. And we don't have passing periods. But then they're spaced out through the day. We have, is it four, I believe, different segments of the day that we offer these. And so, you know, they exit, there's an hour break. Then the next group comes in and they don't wander the building. They go directly to wherever they've signed up to be. And then they're in that pod for that period of time. And again, when they're done, they leave. Now, some students may actually come back for one, two, three, four of those in a day. But, but we don't have people doing passing periods and we, and we, and we don't have fifteen hundred people in the building at the same time.
So how many students will there be for each of these periods?
Well, they're going to have to be.
What's the maximum, I guess I should say?
Well, 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 first of all, we're in phase four, so the maximum is you can't have more than fifty people anywhere in the state of Illinois. That's the first thing. But the more important thing is we have, we have to size it to spaces because we have to do social distancing and, and whatever. Now, what we will do with the registration is, is figure out the spaces that will accommodate that group. So if we have six students coming into tie-dye, you know, then we'll, we'll, we'll size it to those six. But if we have some jazz band or some activity out, I don't know, pep badge, something or other, we're going to have to size it very differently. You know, we might have twenty, twenty-five or thirty come in, but we'll size it in a space where we can do all the social distancing that we need to do.
Well, and just to be clear, when you were referring to the fifty, that does not mean that we can only have fifty students in the entire building at any one time. I mean, I know that, you know that. I just wanted to.
Thank you for clarifying.
The way you said that, I just wanted.
Yeah, I probably used a shorthand in saying that. So, so thank you for asking, because.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, you know, if, if, if you're bringing in for in-person, why aren't you doing the classes? Very, very different and a very different, different concept of having pods and, and, and being able to size things to specific areas.
Thank you. And can you just clarify, who are the adults in charge here?
I'll, I'll leave that to, because Nicole, I know you've been working hard on getting this staff. I'll leave that to you.
So in terms of student activities and community service, that's under my supervision and my staff from the Hope will be present for that. Teachers will be doing that. Robbie Brown will be overseeing the registration for the instructional staff. Nick will be supervising the his area and Chris has already been doing it for Ben Arts and Dr. Kiwanah Brown and her staff. It will be doing the Safe Center for Online Learning.
And I'd just like to mention too that our teachers, we've been working very closely with them on this project and they are supportive of these in-person experiences. And many of their members will be volunteering to come in to provide in-person instructional experiences for their students.
Marcus, thank you for lifting that up. Our, our staff does not want to get COVID. And who does? And so what we're doing is structuring something that, that can, can, we can manage the safety of the situation much more closely and carefully. And I might mention too, because, because I know there are questions about it. We have not had an opportunity to provide here at the school the vaccine for all of our staff. Some are getting appointments, you know, at Walgreens and places like that. And, and of course, we would encourage anybody, if you can get an appointment, get your vaccine. But, but we, you know, we have a lot of employees and we're working closely with the city of Evanston, the Department of Public Health. They know the need. They've even made arrangements with us that when the vaccine is available, we'll actually do, I guess, what I would call mass vaccination for our staff here at E T H S. Robbie Brown's already worked closely with, with the Department of Public Health and we have the sites, you know, the intake, the get the shot, they, they, they remain for a period of time to make sure that you're not having a reaction. But, but at the moment, the vaccine is simply not available to our whole staff, not even close here in Evanston. And I think you know nationally, it, 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 it just varies so much. We know, for example, that, that in nearby communities, they've been trying to vaccinate, vaccinate all of the teachers. But that is simply not the case yet in Evanston. And we have to depend on our Department of Public Health, who is not withholding anything, simply does not have the supply.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I am so impressed with how well-rounded your approach has been and how thoughtful you've clearly been in designing these in-person experiences and all facets of a student person and, and profile, I guess, of, of, you know, what, what, where can, what can we, as you said, what can we do to meet students where they are? And I was very impressed on Friday watching the E T H S live video. How clear you were, Dr. Witherspoon, about you know, what, what is important to students? What do students want? What are students looking for? What would be meaningful to them? And, and really sort of living up to that idea of belonging? And how do we welcome students back into the school? How do we, you know, a student experience, students who are, you know, incoming freshmen who've never seen the school want different things than students who are graduating in a couple of months? And, and I think that's really sort of important as we continue to have this conversation about nurturing our students through these high school years that we're taking their needs into account and we're listening to them and we're figuring out what, what they need right now as we talk about their mental health and we talk about their social and emotional learning. And you've clearly done that. It's so impressive. I love the Google website. I want to push every one of those buttons and find out what you've got on offer and and I just, you know, the presentation tonight, I'm just really blown away, you know, this center, this, the Safe Center for Online Learning is wonderful and the way you've conceived it as being a pressure-free, you know, space for students to come and have access to online learning if they need it, if they want it. To Dr. Babus's really illuminating report on you know, GPA, and I always think that this is really where we ought to be moving is, is into looking at grades and in the classroom sort of metrics as opposed to, you know, the standardized testing ether that we get that sort of takes us away from these real on the ground, in the classroom kinds of experiences. And it's very interesting that those bands of, you know, the A Bs and the C Ds and, you know, that, that data is really interesting. It sort of turns upside down. I don't know, whatever preconceived notions I might have had about, you know, the previous year to this year and how students are faring in their online experiences. So that's, it's really great to see. I think there's a lot of assumptions that we're making about, you know, how students are learning academically in the classroom. And you're really showing that the student, you know, educational and academic experience isn't suffering. And that idea that, you know, we can really do online learning. We can really make this a good thing. We can really make this a good thing. You know, that, that hundred percent best way to teach students in a pandemic is going to be this remote experience with, it's, you're showing that that's actually true. And that's bearing out. So thank you for all the work that you've all done.
Thank you for saying that. May I share something?
Certainly.
Okay. So thank you for that feedback, which is making me, um, I'm embarrassed that I didn't say this before, but, um, we really owe a debt of gratitude to our, um, our ed tech team here at ETHS. I, I'd love to work in teams. I love to collaborate. I really do. And I have, I can't say enough stuff about, um, our colleagues in that department that are, um, that's headed up by David Chan. He and his team are amazing. That's how so much of this stuff, um, is happening behind the scenes. I can't, um, I just can't say enough. And our, um, our, our operations staff and, um, um, and Robbie Brown with Operations and School Logistics, there's so much, just behind the scenes that's happening. And, you know, just the constant collaboration, um, with colleagues right now. I've just never seen so many people work so hard and work so, so well. Um, even in communications, I can't forget about, um, Takumi and her staff too. But really, 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 really want to lift our ed tech team. They are, they really have our back. They really have the students back. They're making so, so many things happen. And, you know, in the world of pivoting, we all hate that word, but they're so on it. They're so responsive, always problem solving, always have a solution, always have a smile. And the things that, you know, the public facing things look amazing. Um, and again, Ellie Hart with the website. So, um, I just really wanted to shout out our, our ed tech team. So thank you for giving me the moment to do that. They deserve so many kudos.
I'm gonna jump in quickly and just want, we say this every time we meet, just how impressed we are with the entire ETHS staff. You all didn't just come up with this. You've been doing this work from the moment we shut down to be very intentional about your decision-making to keep students centered of mind first. That's, that's who we're trying to help. It's the students. And you've been doing this from day one and we have said it over and over again. We've saw how quickly you, um, started reimagining and reorganizing staff, responsibilities to stay in touch with students and their families. Just remarkable work. So I have to echo what Stephanie said and, and, and just also to say that I'm blown away, but I'm not surprised. I mean, this is what I expect from ETHS and you always raise the bar and you set the standard and you become an example. And together we work collaboratively. We are a united front in all the decisions that we have been made, um, that have been made. And, and that's because we know we have experts leading us and that you all care deeply about what's best for our students. Everyone, not just the teachers in the classroom. I mean, every single person that is connected to ETHS. So, um, yeah, this is another moment for us to say, wow. You know, this is amazing, um, work that you all have created. And I know it hasn't been easy and you've continued to push forward. So congratulations to all of you. And I know our students are excited. I know our students are excited because you're thinking about them. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with Monique and Stephanie that, you know, you guys, as usual, the bar is really high and you guys blow it away and go even higher. So this is really awesome. Um, and I really love that I noticed in, um, one of the slides that there's a, you know, a referral, that you're, you're going that extra. It's not just who signs up, which is great. But maybe somebody needs a little encouragement and maybe they need help. Maybe they don't have, perceive themselves as having a lot of, you know, know-how to do some of these things. And, you know, encouraging them to go and try something new, um, and, and engage. That's so important. I, my quick question was, um, because we have four thousand kids and they all want to come back to ETHS. Um, just logistically, like, how does this work? Like, I know you're gonna have four sessions on Mondays and you can have different groups. We've got a big building luckily. Um, but will there be some things after school on other days? And can you just talk a little bit about that? Because I want to make sure, because I know you're already thinking this, that we aren't, no child left behind on this one, right? Everybody gets something? And, um, I just want to make sure the community knows that you're, you're being very intentional about that. So if you could just give us a quick, uh, explanation, that would be great.
Said, no child left behind. Uh, no, we, so we'll be offering opportunities on, on Mondays. We'll be offering opportunities after school. Uh, we'll be offering opportunities during office hours. We'll be offering opportunities during Wildcat Academy. Um, you know, if teachers want to run a special program in-person, they can do that. Uh, Nicole, what am I missing? Am I missing any, anything?
Just gonna say no Sundays. Every day but Sunday.
Everybody deserves a little rest, right? No, that's terrific. Thank you.
And I'll just point out, there are two reasons. One, all those opportunities allow our kids to figure out what works best for them, obviously. But the other is, it allows us to spread these activities out even more. And so that it's not like, well, the only time is everybody would have to come, you know, Monday morning or whatever. Uh, and, and so it's by design, uh, offering things throughout the week, uh, in, in order to space people out as well.
So I guess I wanna, um, echo what all, or several of my colleagues have said about, um, just being completely blown away and super impressed um, by the care and the thoughtfulness and the planning that I can only imagine has been happening for months around this. Um, I'm sure that you have been thinking and talking and, and just putting so many hours in anticipating the needs of students and tweaking and changing. And I'm, and I imagine that that's going to continue, um, based on the response that you get. And of course, as much planning as you've done, um, I'm sure other needs will surface that you didn't anticipate. So, um, this is very unique. And, and very much what I expect at ETHS, what I've come to expect from ETHS. It's, and it's why I am connected to ETHS. It's such, I have such ETHS pride right now. And I'm so excited and I can imagine that the students are as well very excited that they are, that they have this opportunity. And, um, and that you're also really concerned about keeping the students and the staff. And I'm gonna add our community, because we know that we have four thousand students and six hundred staff. And that means that those students go back into the community. So we do take our responsibility to this community very seriously. And I appreciate that. So thank you. And thank you for the work. Thank you for the work that you've done leading up to this. The work that you will do as we implement and the work ahead as we make changes and tweaks, those necessary tweaks. This is really, this is really something. This is really amazing. So I really commend you and all the planners and the implementers and our faculty and staff as well. Thank you so much. All right. Awesome work. Awesome work. Okay, let's keep going. We are at item number six. And that's comments from the public. Dr. Babus?
Yes, we have three comments this evening. I will, uh, read them into the record right now. One second here. Okay. Uh, our first comment is from Matt Deschant. Dear Dr. Witherspoon and Dr. Campbell, ask, clarify on reopening plan for ETHS. My name is Matthew Deschant and I'm a parent of Miles Deschant sophomore at ETHS. My other two sons are in District sixty-five and Jackson will be attending ETHS in the fall, currently at King Lab, King Arts eighth grade, and Ethan is at Rhodes in fifth grade. We are both, uh, we are seeing both a complete lack of communication on plans for the remainder of the school year and beyond on both your school website and directly from your communications director, who I spoke with on the phone almost a week ago. Who promised we'd return call and more info as of today, have not received anything. And as a new member of the Evanston community in 2020, we relocated from Chicago. This has been a challenging year above and beyond the COVID crisis. None of my sons have had the opportunity to spend one day in an Evanston school. In addition to the struggle of remote learning from an academic standpoint, they have had no opportunities to meet and make meaningful friendships with fellow students. This is preventing our family from integrating into the new community and is affecting our children's ability to excel academically. Furthermore, and one of the most baffling things for our family to understand is why there's a clear and distinct lack of collaboration between District sixty-five and District two oh two. Everything we read in the news, see online, or hear from your communications director, the answer is the same. We are two separate districts and that's that. Let me explain how this plays out for our family. District sixty-five is going to start back with in-person learning mid-February. Jackson will go back full-time. Ethan will go back half-days. And Miles will seemingly be at home alone. From an Evanston community standpoint, you must realize this makes no sense. Please provide my family and the larger community with a plan for providing in-person learning. I'm reachable here via email or by phone if you'd like to discuss in more details. Thank you for your time, Matt Deschant. Uh, our second public comment is from Joshua Bernstein. Uh, dear Representative Gable, I am a resident of Evanston, a person, a, a parent of an Evanston Township High School junior, a constituent and a voter. Because this letter concerns the operation of ETHS, I am copying Superintendent Witherspoon, Principal Campbell, and Assistant Superintendent Babus, who I asked to read this letter into the record at the next ETHS School Board meeting. I've been told that a group calling itself reopen Evanston Schools has contacted you in order to enlist your support in forcing ETHS to reopen for in-person learning. As I am not privy to the content of this group's message to you, I am certain, I'm not certain exactly what they asked you to do. However, as your constituent, I want you to be, I want to be sure you are aware that this group does not represent all ETHS parents. First, I'm sure you are aware that you have no authority to force any action from the ETHS administration, which answers to the District two oh two School Board. Moreover, your intervention is not appropriate in this situation. Doctors Witherspoon and Campbell were hired by the School Board to manage the school in accordance with the Board's policies and directives. You have neither the experience nor training to do anything more than use your position as a member in the House of Representatives to pressure the administration to change your decision made in the best interest of our children. You should know that if you intervene on behalf of reopen Evanston Schools, you are doing so in contravention of the wishes of constituents like me. Second, to the extent recent studies have shown that there is a low risk of transmission in schools, this does not mean no risk. I ask what you think is an acceptable cost in lives to reopen the schools? Will you go to a funeral of a constituent whose child brought COVID-19 home from school and spread the infection to family members? What would you tell that student? Quote, "I thought it was for the best?" Question mark, close quote. "I'm confident that you will not jeopardize the health of our families by intervening to undo the works of Doctors Witherspoon and Campbell have done to protect our children. Thank you. Sincerely, Joshua Bernstein." Our third public comment is from Joe Mathias Shelbert. Dear members of the School Board, my name is Joe Mathias Shelbert, President of the Teachers Council, the union that represents the licensed staff at ETHS. I'm writing to share two messages with you. The first message is that since March of 2020, Teachers Council has worked closely with the ETHS administration to continue to fulfill our responsibilities to the students and families of the district. We know, we want you to know that TC supports our administration and the numerous decisions they have made during the COVID-19 crisis. Their work led by Dr. Witherspoon has not occurred in a vacuum, but rather in a collaborative setting where problems are addressed and solutions are vetted to determine the best path forward for all. In addition, the district continues to do a thoughtful job of finding ways to provide for the academic and social, emotional well-being of our students. TC commands the administration's hard work. Thank you for continuing to support the efforts of our ETHS administration and faculty. The second message I want to convey is the importance of continued adherence to school safety measures related to the pandemic. We must prioritize safety. As President of TC and a science teacher, I understand the critical value of following scientific guidance to inform the decision-making processes related to COVID-19. We are encouraged that Dr. Witherspoon remains committed to upholding the position of the CDC IDPH and the City of Evanston on health and safety measures for our high school. We appreciate that the ETHS School Board Administration continues to keep the health and welfare of the student staff and the greater ETHS community as their top priority. Thank you. Joe Mathias Shelbert, TC President. And that concludes this evening's public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Babus. All right. The next item on our agenda is FOIA. We have one, two, three, four, five. Is that correct? Yes. Um, they're in the packet. Uh, Dr. Babus, did you have anything you'd like to add about them?
No, just that there is a part one and part two due to the Hernandez FOIA request. That's all.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we are at item eight, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any reports?
Pat, I'll, I'll just quickly, just, um, the Discipline Subcommittee is still meeting. So I think we have another meeting tomorrow. Um, if I'm correct. I think it's tomorrow, but we are, we are still meeting and moving through, um, the, um, our SRO, um, kind of situation. But nothing to report right now, except that we plan on presenting, I believe, to the Board or the Subcommittee will present to the Board in May. So with recommendations going forward.
Okay, wonderful.
And, and a lot of that has to do with Dr. Robinson, you know, and, and he's, he's back and he's leading this. So, um, we just needed more time.
Thank you. Thank you. Important update. All right. Uh, Student Board Report. Camina.
Hello, hello. So today I actually was, wanted to talk a little bit about the Black Summit, because I just wanted to say, you know, that was a really positive thing for me today. I had a lot of fun. Um, my favorite group I was in was the juke group, where, you know, I got to move a little bit. It was really fun. Um, but I loved the speaker and, you know, a lot of, I talked, I had a lot of people in my affinity group and we talked about how much that we thought, you know, it wasn't gonna be as fun this year because it was, you know, on, online and on Zoom. And a lot of people were really pleasantly surprised and, and thought of it as a really great experience. So I just wanted to share a little bit of that. And then I also got to be in the school last week for, because I'm also on the board, the YAMO Board, um, where I'm directing and writing. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna do the show, because we're doing it virtually.
Sorry.
And, sorry, my brother chooses this moment to fill up his water bottle with ice. I love it. Um, anyway, but I've been in the school and I was actually, I was really scared at first. I was like walking up the stairs, going through the doors. And I came into, I saw like this group of like, what, ten people? I had maybe like eight to ten people on the board. And I was like, oh my gosh, I had this moment of fear. And I was like, okay, it's fine. I have a mask on. I pumped the hand sanitizer twenty times. Think I'm okay. Um, but- But it ended up being a really positive experience and I was like, okay, I feel comfortable about it just because seeing the staff and I saw a lot of, a lot of the people that were like helping make the school environment, you know, safe and setting stuff up. They were so excited to see me. I got to talk to some people and then overall it was just, it was, I felt super safe and it was really fun. So I'm like, I was really excited to get back in the school and those, those are the experiences that I miss, you know, the extracurricular stuff that is being brought back. And I'm like, I'm glad I'm not, you know, in school, learning with a teacher who's also on Zoom. I feel like that would have been really hard. So, you know, I'm just glad to get that experience in school. And yeah, and in terms of like the student union stuff, we're, we're basically right now, the students were figuring out what kind of two or three big objectives we're going to have or big things we're going to tackle going into, you know, this next quarter and ending the year, you know, just what things we can just make a change with, one of the, you know, biggest student issues that are coming up to finish out the year. And that is pretty much it.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent report. Very, very cool. Yeah, those first moments walking in the building can be very frightening. Yes. Thank you for sharing. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
All right. And thank you, Carmea, as always. It, it's always an honor to follow you in these reports. Kudos to E T H S for all of our Black History Month activities that are taking place and will all month long. And Carme already highlighted that today was the Virtual Black Students Summit and the, we're just getting rave reviews for that. It's different approach and in the end the same summit and, and is good or better than ever. So to all involved in that, congratulations. Congratulations to our math, two of our math teams. They have achieved the fine, both finalists and an honorable mention, ranking twenty-third in the annual Compaq High School Mathematical Contest in Modeling. Both teams are going to continue to test their math skills by participating in the MathWorks Math Modeling Competition later this year. Because yes, whether it's Science Olympiad or, or Compaq Modeling Competition, we're keeping all of this going with our students and, and they're staying highly involved in, in these activities. There will be signup for our virtual spring conferences, parent conferences. They will be held, the, the signup begins next Tuesday, February the sixteenth. The conferences will be held again as they were in the fall via Zoom and those will be on February the twenty-fifth from one thirty to four thirty and again from six P M to nine P M. And just as a reminder, we have some non-attendance days then on February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth due to the parent-teacher conferences. E T H S continues to partner with the Family Action Network, FAN. They've been bringing in amazing things. I, I swear, FAN and, and Lonnie Stonich deserves such credit for this, but FAN, I, I think is, is on hyper FAN this year. What they have been offering is just amazing. But we do have an upcoming one on February the tenth, just in a couple of days. And this will be an event with Robert Putnam and Shaylan Romney Garrett and it's a presentation called "The Upswing: How America Came Together a Century Ago and How We Can Do It Again." It begins via Zoom at six P M. E T H S is hosting many events virtually. Just want to highlight the people on the lookout for these. Our Wildkid Academy and Marcus, you mentioned that already earlier this evening, but that continues and we have the Family Talk Series that is underway, so check our calendar for those details. And the next Wildkid Academy is this Saturday, February thirteenth. And the next Family Talk Event is titled "Teen Substance Use During a Pandemic." And that's on Thursday, March fourth at six thirty P M via Zoom. Dr. Campbell and I are continuing with E-Town Live Series and the next one will be Friday, February the nineteenth. And as always, at eight A M, for all the people who are not interested in tuning in at eight A M on a Friday morning, they all are then linked on our website and available on demand. So I wanted to let everybody know that. We're actually very excited about our Class of 2021 graduating on May the twenty-third. And we want to remind all of our seniors and their families to get your cap and gown orders in. They are due on Wednesday, February the seventeenth. I will mention that we have not been able to finalize plans, but we believe that we will be able to do two versions of commencement this year. You, you'll recall that our virtual commencement last year actually was a hit. And what was nice about that is the whole class could be graduated at the same time and even archive that. In addition, if we remain in Phase Four of mitigation, we also want to do a staggered outdoor ceremonies at Le Jour Field. That's going to take a little bit more coordinating. For example, right now, we would only be able to, we, everybody had to be socially distanced and we could only have no more than fifty people at one event. So we, we may be staggering and handing out diplomas all day long. But we'll see where we are with COVID and with the mitigation, but I, I do want our seniors to know, get those caps and gowns because we think we're going to be able to do both and, and we'll figure out how to make it just as exciting as we can for you. And another reminder, I'm not quite done. As President's Day is Monday, the fifteenth. Our students won't forget it, but we'll remind all of our families that we will, that will be a non-attendance day. And finally, I want to highlight that our E T H S Educational Foundation is this year going to be doing its Wild for E T H S event virtually. It'll be on February the twenty-seventh. It, it's going to be a little different obviously than last year, but everybody is invited to participate. And even the admission, if you will, is what people feel they can afford or are able to do. Obviously, it's helping the foundation, but, but you know, if, if a dollar, five dollars is going to make it doable for you, if, if less than a dollar, tune in. And, and obviously we hope that there'll be others who can contribute more so that we can really build up the foundation. This year, we're going to be seeing talented alumni and students performing and we'll also have student testimonials and stories that'll showcase the mission of the foundation. And for those of you thinking, who are thinking, you know, again, it's, I don't think I said this, it's at six forty-five P M on February the twenty-seventh. And for those who think, gee, I don't know if I want to tie up a whole evening, it'll probably be close to forty-five minutes. So a lot of stuff packed in to, to less than an hour and a chance for E T H S to come together. And woo, that does conclude my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that report. All right, we're at item number eleven. We're at the Finance Reports. This is Modino. And it's Williams, yes.
Yes, Ken Cott is here with me tonight, so we're both here.
Hello everyone.
Hi.
Report for you. We know it's been a sort of a long meeting. We don't, we don't have a lengthy presentation. We do have a few slides for you that we'll go through and you had a memo in your packet telling you that what we're seeing is not completely surprising. The revenues and expenses are for the most part where we thought they'd be. So I'm going to share my screen and just start a really short presentation and Kendra is going to start out going through those slides and then I'll jump in. Kendra, is there anything else you wanted to say before we start?
No, I mean, I think that that was a good introduction. I am happy to say that nothing is jarring at this point. You know, we're living in a time where you really don't know what to expect from one year to the next, even one day to the next sometimes, the way that things are going. And so I'm happy to say that things are where we would expect at this time of year. And I'll just start going through the different funds. We're going to do a little analysis of the different funds and then Mary will share some budget concerns after that. So starting off with the Education Fund, which is our largest fund of the, that we have, the revenues were at forty-six point nine five percent and expenditures are forty-two point nine nine percent. And so with that forty-six point nine five for revenues, it is slightly below last fiscal year. But once again, not out of the realm of what would be expected or, and it's still within a normal range of, of what we have had in previous normal years. And this decrease that we're seeing, like I said, that because it's slightly below is really because of a decrease in local revenue. So when you think about things like food service, which, you know, we have a number of kids that pay for lunch and breakfast, things like that. We're not getting that revenue now. And so while we made some adjustments to the budget, knowing that we weren't going to go back to in-person, you know, as it carries on throughout the year, obviously we, we just have less of that revenue or vending would be another example. But we have received ninety-eight percent of our property taxes for this fund and so we're still holding strong there in revenues. And expenditures are also slightly below the typical range. And so that can also be attributed to just operational changes in response to the pandemic.
Sorry, sorry Kendra, I was just going to say before I go to the next slide, I just wanted to remind everyone that we're reporting this at the beginning of February, but the numbers that we're showing you go through the end of December. So really on a fiscal year basis, it's half the year. So that fifty percent number is always in our head as we look at these actual results. However, you know, school doesn't start until the end of August, so our expenses are not necessarily evenly split during those twelve months. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things that we keep in mind as we're looking through these.
Thank you for framing that, Mary. Very good point.
It would have helped if I would have framed it at the beginning, right? But trying to slide to advance, sorry, it's, there we go. Oh wait, I think I went too far. Sorry.
No, no, we're there. Tort Fund, you're, you're, you're spot on. Thank you. And so for the Tort Fund, revenues are forty-seven point fifteen percent lower than last year's collection rate. But once again, within that normal range for, as Mary just framed out for us, expenditures you'll see are at a hundred percent. And this is actually what it typically is halfway through the year because in the beginning of the year, that's when we pay our insurance premiums and that's all that is budgeted for in the Tort Fund for expenditures. And so then moving on to operations and maintenance, we have forty point nine percent for revenues, which is behind last year's, but because last year was at forty-six point four percent. But there's a lack of rental revenue in this fund. So once again, just some local revenue that we're not seeing this year due to everything that's going on with the pandemic. But still, we're, we're doing okay there. And for expenditures, we're at forty-six point one percent, which is also on track for the first half of our fiscal year. And then for bonds and interest, Fund Thirty. I'll give one second. Or is it me that's slow? Oh no. I'm sorry, can I get a, are you guys able to hear me? Oh, I see nods. Okay, great. Sorry. But are we no longer seeing the slides?
Right, we lost the slides.
Okay. I knew that something had gone awry here.
I think we lost Mary.
Oh no. Okay, one second.
But we did, yes, you're right.
Yeah, no, we could hear you fine, but we just, we were so in tune to what you were saying.
Oh, maybe Mary was controlling.
And Mary will probably log back in. Sometimes she has some connection.
She was doing the slides, yeah.
Yeah, no problem. I'm going to get them pulled up here just in case we don't get her back sooner than later. So just give me one moment. This is going to be like our longest presentation ever just because of the technical difficulties normally. We can zip through pretty quickly for you all.
But you might need to have it on deck anyway.
I'm so sorry. I'm back. Kendra, do you want me to reshare?
Uh, sure, Mary, that's fine. You can.
That was a test, everyone, for me to see how Kendra would do without me. How'd she do?
She was moving right along without you.
Until the slide didn't move.
I was pulling them up. Let me, okay, so I'm going to walk off of this device.
Of course, my internet's been fine all night. Where are we?
We're on Fund Thirty.
Oh, okay.
All right, awesome. All right, so for bond and interest, the revenues are at thirty-eight point four three percent and expenditures at eighty-four point four five percent. So just to address, because that eighty-four point four five, because looking at that, it looks like, okay, there's a large chunk there. One, really, we're halfway through the year, but that's because our debt service payments happen in December. And so with that, we're paying principal and some interest in December and that's a large chunk of what's, what's accounted for in the budget there. And so the only thing left would be some spring interest payments that we have and, and then that's when we'll get to that other sixteen or so percent. For the Transportation Fund, fifty-eight point twelve percent for revenues and then eight point five five percent for expenditures. And so again, just to address the item that, you know, looks a little quirky since we're halfway through the year, that eight point five five percent, that would be because for the Transportation Fund, we're just not having the same expense levels that we typically would with students being remote. We have been, we've had our transportation services suspended with a great deal of our vendors. And so there's only a few students that we're transporting at this point to some off-campus facilities. And then with I M R F, revenues are at forty-five point seven eight percent. And then we have expenditures at thirty-eight point three nine percent. And so within the normal range for, for revenues and expenditures are just slightly below at this point. And moving along to Capital Improvement. So for the Capital Improvement Fund, we, for the Capital Improvement Fund, the revenue that we do have in, in this fund is really just due to donations secured through the E T H S Foundation. I didn't do the same pie just because the Capital Improvement Fund is a little bit different with how the, it's, but we budget there because we don't have the same like tax levy going on for that fund as we do. And then we also only do bond sales and, and things of that nature every other year. And this wasn't a year where we did that. And so expenditures are on target with, with this fund as well. And those expenses that we have had are just primarily due to the summer twenty twenty projects and finishing those up once the fiscal year started. And I will let Mary take it away with budget concerns.
Okay, thanks Kendra. Sorry about that internet crash. We just have a couple of slides with some budget concerns. Some of these are things that we really talk about every year and then a couple are a little bit unique. We, we do tend to usually see state payments somewhat slow. The good thing is that the evidence-based funding, which is our largest source of state funding, doesn't usually lag and we see those payments come in regularly every month. I think they come in twice a month. We are continuing to see a delay, but it's really not a very long delay in the federal revenues. And sometimes that is just due to how the grant reporting works. So that money is, we know it's coming and there's usually a slight delay in that. The number just came out for last year's CPI, so I don't know if, if many people really know this yet because because my counterparts have been all over the board in what was being anticipated as a CPI number for the year. It's a number which, as you may remember, does affect the increase in our property taxes. We're limited to the increase of CPI when we do our levies every December. So the new number that we'll be working with is a 1.4% increase, which in a crazy year that we've had for 2020, some people were predicting zero, negative, all kinds of things. Just as a little reminder, the year before was 2.3% and that 2.3% was more than we had seen in probably five years or so. So the 1.4%, in my opinion, I'm certainly not the expert on this, but I think it's more favorable than a lot of people expected. And just to mention, there's, we feel like there's always a threat of a property tax freeze. We really heard about this a lot when there was an attempt to pass the graduated income tax. So to be honest, I'm not sure how much of a threat it is right now, but we always want to keep it in the back of our minds because there's a good chance that some year, our property tax levy might not be able to be increased. So just along with budget concerns, we always are thinking of contingency planning. We know that, as Kendra mentioned, there have been changes in revenues and expenses and how they're flowing. And a lot of that has been due to COVID and some of the unknowns. And another thing that we're interested in keeping track of, and that CPI is a part of it, is how the recovery will look. If you remember back in June, I talked to you a little bit about modeling some recovery numbers and some trends to see how the next few years might look. And so that CPI number is just the first part of starting to put all of that together. We know things like interest, interest revenues are down. And so we'll be looking at all those things to kind of pace our recovery. And I wanted to leave this in from previous years, although I haven't heard much about it lately. But certainly with Illinois not receiving any changes in that graduated income tax, pension shifts for teacher pensions are always in the background. So I just wanted to mention that again. And I think that's it. I'll stop sharing my screen. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kendra and Mary. Very good, very helpful, those visuals. I think, Kendra, you did those really helpful, really good to see them. It's really easy to follow and understand, so thank you. Questions from the board?
Well, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mary and Kendra and the team because, you know, this just is not the kind of report that a lot of school boards are hearing across the country right now. And it's not their fault. It's not that they aren't doing their best. But we are just really, really fortunate to have been thinking and planning for worst-case days, those awful rainy days, and it poured on us. And we're still here doing everything we need to do and stepping up, you know, the IT department and making sure that they're getting what they need to support our teachers and students. And so it's just, you know, it just, we joke about your late-night reports, Mary, but you know what, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything that we do without you guys. And so thank you, thank you. I mean, just, yeah, just amazing what you guys have done. And you've been doing this for years. You've been planning for this forever, even though you didn't know. So thank you. We really, we rely on you so much and we appreciate everything you do.
Thanks for that, Pat.
So I just want to echo that as well. It's really very comforting to know that, that our numbers look the way they look right now and that you are not only being very responsible, that both of you and your team, you're being very responsible with our budget, but you also understand our values, you understand what we're all about. And I think that really helps us all work together as a team. We don't know what the future holds, of course. And you always put out these little warnings that always make me a little nervous. And then I remember how, how much you plan and anticipate and think ahead and how much you understand the school, the district. You've got the vision and I start to feel better. So we don't know what post-COVID is going to look like. And even as we make these plans for the near future, you know, we just know that we might be faced with some challenges that we haven't seen before. But it is very encouraging to know that we developed a pattern and a history here that really, we can anticipate that we'll work together and we'll get through whatever we have, so thank you.
Agreed. And I don't think we've had any huge surprises other than a pandemic. But, you know, but I mean financially, nothing big. But, but once that all happened, we knew, and as Kendra mentioned, you know, food service revenues, they're nothing. They're, you know, other than reimbursements for, you know, the meals that we've been doing for families as they pick them up. You know, food service revenues and rental revenues, clearly those are zero. And we knew that a long time ago, depending on how, you know, the school year shaped up. So it's not a surprise. We can weather it. We've always been conservative. The board's been conservative about the usage of fund balance and being, you know, frugal wherever we can. And so even though it's not pleasant to see some zeros, we certainly are not surprised by them. Our, you know, our small amount that we really collect in tuition revenues, you know, from paying families, that's behind last year's pace. But again, we're not surprised and we're not the kind of district that, you know, hassles families about making a payment on a certain date because we certainly understand the situations everyone, all the families are facing. So there are no surprises and we're weathering the storm and we will continue to let the board know if anything does come up that we're concerned about.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kendra. Okay, moving right along with our agenda, we're at our Items for Action. The first item is Women's History Month Resolution. And Pat Monzel is going to read that for us.
Women's History Month, March 2021. National Women's History Alliance theme for 2021, Valiant Women of the Vote. For the second year in a row, the theme Valiant Women of the Vote celebrates women who have fought for women's right to vote in the United States. In recognition of the Centennial of the 19th Amendment, we will honor women from the original suffrage movement as well as 20th and 21st century women who have continued to struggle fighting against poll taxes, literacy tests, voter roll purges and other more contemporary forms of voter suppression to ensure voting rights for all. Throughout our history, women have dedicated their lives to achieving equal rights for all Americans. They envisioned a society where women could pursue a formal education, start a business, serve in the military, or run for elected office. The example of each of these women motivates successive generations to aspire to greatness and to stand tall in the face of adversity. We remember all the American women, past and present, who have inspired the empowered today's women to advocate for their beliefs and pursue their dreams without hesitation. American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement and other movements such as the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. During Women's History Month, we recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, grandmothers, aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. The President of the United States has proclaimed March 2021 as Women's History Month to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplishments, and contributions of American women. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Women's History Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Law Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monzel.
Yes.
Marsons.
Yes.
Lowlowitz.
Yes.
Terich.
Yes.
Levitch Williams.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. The next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of 2021 window and roof replacement and associated masonry work. Approval of minutes from the January 11th, 2021 closed session meeting, January 11th, 2021 regular meeting. Approval of bills, personnel agenda, which includes two addendums, one, release of safety, and two, resolution of safety. And change in status, educational stipends, leave of absence, maternity certified.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monzel.
Yes.
Marsons.
Yes.
Lowlowitz.
Yes.
Terich.
Yes.
Law Day.
Yes.
Levitch Williams.
Yes. All right, does anybody have any old or new business to present? If not, could I have a motion for adjourning?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all for your time. Wonderful meeting. Take care.
Bye.